...to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, founded with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, for those of you watching, we just returned back from the Tewksbury Performing Arts where we're honored the Abigail and John Adams recipients this year. What a wonderful event. It's always great to show academic excellence here in the Tewksbury Public Schools. And it was wonderful to honor those students and their families. So, thank for all those people that attended tonight. We truly appreciate it. And congratulations to all our John and Abigail Adams Scholarship recipients. At this time, I would like to turn it over to our student rep, Mr. Justin Petrie, to give the Tewksbury Memorial High School report.
Thank you. Student council is collecting all charity drive items due this Friday, drop-off items in A 205 Smith class. The DECA fashion show was a major success, and the money raised will be donated to the Megan McCarthy Research Fund before students leave for winter break. DECA is also preparing to attend their district conference. Best buddies took Walmset lanes by storm this Saturday. There were four students in, there were forty students in attendance, and there were nothing but positive things to say about it. The NHS tutoring program is up and running. Members are sent to the libraries Tuesdays and Fridays after school for their tutoring, and all students are welcome to attend.
Thank you, Mr. Petrie. Have a nice evening.
You as well.
Okay, Dr. O'Connor, may we have the presentation this evening?
Thank you. I would like to introduce Dr. Donald Miller, who is here this evening, along with our head nurse Elaine Walsh. They have a presentation to you regarding Narcan.
Exactly.
Which is a, and I'm gonna let you explain it.
Okay.
You have the medical background, the two of you. But as all of you know, the Middle Florida County DA has reached out to school districts and other agencies across the county to talk about making this drug available to the medical staff in our buildings in the off-chance that we have to deal with drug overdose. So, Elaine, I'm gonna turn this over to you.
Well, thank you for having us here tonight. I just wanted to, I have a quick slideshow. I'll go through it rather fast. I hope you've seen enough media coverage about different school systems stalking Narcan in their school health offices, and we're proposing, Dr. Miller and I have been talking a lot about it. We're proposing stocking it in every school so that we're prepared for an emergency, whether it be students, staff, or even visitors. And so, the opiate problem has fatal overdoses rose from five hundred and twenty-six in 2010 to a thousand and eight in 2014. And that's only the confirmed fatal opiate overdoses. Most of them are anyway. A public safety state of emergency was declared by Governor Patrick back then, and then all the police and fire started carrying the Narcan. And you can see from the little chart I got from the DPH again, how many deaths have risen over the years from opiate overdoses. So opiates are medications such as codeine, morphine, methadone. A lot of prescription drugs that are used for pain relief are opioids in their base. And so, they attach to the receptors in the brain and reduce the pain, which is a really great thing, but sometimes they get out of control. An overdose occurs when there's too much. The opiate receptors in the body are particular. They really want this opioid. And what happens is the opioid blocks the breathing. You get respiratory and then cardiac failure. And as my husband told me tonight, you have to breathe. You have to keep breathing. If you're not breathing, you're gonna die. And we don't want that. So, opioid risk factors, there's a lot of them. What a lot of the research is showing is that a lot of times, people are getting hooked because they have, a lot of kids are getting hooked, a sports injury, and they don't stop the opioids, and they start to crave it more, and then they start to use more substances. And you know, we did that movie If Only here in the Tewksbury schools where we were filmed here, and it did show that, that the kids just keep craving more and more. So Narcan, a simple little box of magic that can stop the opiate overdose. It acts very dramatically. In just one to three minutes, you have, you go from almost near respiratory arrest to being wide awake again. It's safe, effective, and it will not, has no potential for abuse. It's been used by ambulances, emergency room for decades. And when I say decades, I don't mean to, I mean twenty, forty, sixty years. And it is not a controlled substance, but it does require a prescription. And that's why we're asking you to help us along with this. So it, I already told you that slide, it helps, but this one's kind of a nice one. It shows the red dots there are the opioid receptors with the opiate on top of it. You send in Narcan through the nose, and it knocks the opioids off the receptors, which helps restore the breathing. I did not make that slide. Mass DPH did. I am not that talented, but I did like the slide. So death follows, and it's preventable. And what we want is basic life support by having the Narcan onboard in the nurse's office. It doesn't have a street value, so it's not something anybody's gonna try and steal. It doesn't have any major side effects. The nurses have already been trained on how to use it. I went to a nurse leader conference, and they taught all the nurse leaders. DPH is really insisting that nurses learn how to do this, and it's really quite easy. It's administered through the nostrils. There's no needle to worry about. So hopefully, in your packets, you had the National Association of School Nurses and the Mass DPH School Health Unit, what's the word? I'm sorry, their rationale for using Narcan in the schools. All the police and fire do carry it here in town, and all the school nurses are trained to administer it. Narcan, EpiPens, AEDs, they all save lives. And one of the things that we have, the Mass Department of Public Health Enhanced School Health Grants that we participate in, we get about almost $3,000 for medical supplies. And they ask for how many Narcan prescriptions. They're tracking it through the Massachusetts Department of Public Health. And up to date, and this is last week I found this number, 133 school districts have Narcan in their health offices. And there's a couple of articles. There was a really nice article in the Wicked Local on more school nurses carrying Narcan. That was, it was either Medford or Melrose, Melrose, I think. And I'll just, I put in a couple of different ones from Seattle, Warwick, just so that you could see that it's not just here in Massachusetts, and it's not just Tewksbury, but we need to be on the cutting edge. We need to be stocking it. Dr. Miller wrote a policy procedure for us that should be in your packets also.
A draft.
A draft policy, yeah. So that if you could look it over, if there's things you wanna punch up or do, and let us know, and we're happy to answer any questions. That's why we're here tonight.
Thank you so much for the presentation. At this point, I'd like to open up to any of my colleagues for any questions or concerns. Mr. Dick?
Yep. How are you?
Great.
Thanks for presenting this information. I was able to read through everything ahead of time. I just had a couple of quick questions.
Sure.
I don't know, Dr. O'Connor, is there, for training cost? I mean, is it like a cost of district? Is it grants? Can we talk about that? Or how's that?
The training was, is done already. It didn't cost a thing.
So it's nothing.
The Narcan itself costs, I think it was in School Health Supply, which is the company we usually use, I think it was $42 a dose or something like that. Currently, we're looking into getting a free set from the Tewksbury Police and Maria Ruggiero, who is the Substance Abuse Coordinator, who is gonna try and get us some free for this year.
Oh, okay. And then I was just reading the, through the letter, which is great. I just, I just came upon a section where it said where it was gonna be stored. It's like on the last page, and it just says, it's labeled on places where the nasal Narcan is to be stored, should be identified. And then it talks about A, and then B, it says, in such a manner as allowed rapid access by authorized persons, including two identified, including two identified students who are in possession of nasal. So what does that mean?
Do you wanna?
Is that?
There are some children who have Narcan on them. I don't know who they are.
In our school district?
I'm not sure, but there may be tomorrow. If you are, if you are a known user, you can go and get Narcan from CVS.
As I was gonna say, it's probably not, it's not gonna be totally pertinent as much for kids, but it's recommended that all cohorts, or partners, or friends, or, you know, people who are, who have drug addicts in their family or close friends, that they carry the Narcan to save them.
So there could theoretically be a student that has it that would administer it in school now?
It potentially could be.
Could at this point, right now, right?
I know a staff member at my school whose child is a user, who has had it with her.
Okay. No, that, that the answer is, I was just wondering about different school districts. You provided that, and that's about it, ma'am chair.
All the nurses have a jump kit, which is an orange bag, and we're going to label one pocket to put the Narcan in. We talked about that at the training, where it would be best stored, and that way, it would be consistent throughout the district. If we all, we all have the same orange bag, and we all have EpiPens in one side, and we'd have the Narcan in the other.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, ma'am chair.
Thank you, Mr. Dick. Uh, Mr. Cutlass?
Thank you, ma'am chair. Just, even at the elementary schools, you're gonna have this?
Yes, for staff and visitors. Hopefully, never need to use it.
Right, right.
But I have, I work at the elementary, at the Heathbrook School, and I have seen parents who are impaired, so it, the possibility is out there.
All right. Thank you, Agent.
Thank you, Mr. Cutlass. Mrs. Miller?
Thank you. I just wanna thank you both for coming this evening and impairing this policy and the presentation for the community. In my professional world, I've covered a lot of opioid overdoses and deaths in this community and adjacent communities. And when it is preventable, there's an opportunity for that person to go on and do wonderful things with their life, but, and you don't know who's the user. And you don't know who will come to a school seeking help. So I've covered a lot of this in public health as well through my work, so I just wanna thank you for coming and supporting.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller. Mr. Francis?
Thank you. I just wanna echo my fellow members. I think it's a great program. I think it's, you know, long overdue. And I think with the situation we have today in society in general, I think that, you know, save one life, it wouldn't make up for anything else that goes on. So it was a great presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. I just have a few questions.
Sure.
So as far as the training, is it only nurses in each building that do it, or administrators also trained in this?
Currently, the nurses are, I'm still waiting to hear from DPH on delegation and medication administration, where we have to have special permission to give EpiPens on a field trip or other medications on a field trip. We currently don't have that. And I asked, and I kept getting the answer, no, we don't need delegation for this. So I'm not really sure, but we can certainly, as soon as I get the full answer, I can absolutely train. The nurses are all trained, and they can train at a staff meeting at the same time they train for EpiPen administration.
Okay, thank you. That was one of my questions, because now that we're taking this on, you know, we need to have procedures and protocols in place. My other concern is substitutes. We know that if it's only nurses, I mean, I almost think it should be one more layer.
Right.
Just my own personal, but I'm sure you guys will continue to look at that.
Right.
But if it was a substitute nurse coming in, how are they trained, and are they trained? And is that something we do before them entering into the building? Because we do, if we have it.
Right.
And we need to prevent it. We need to make sure that if it, God forbid, that did happen, that we had the right people in place to use it.
Right.
So I do have some concerns just around, I know it's evolving, but I do have a few concerns just around who's administering, and then what if a nurse is not in the building? You know, who else is properly trained to, in fact?
We currently have six substitute nurses on the rolls. Three of them are emergency room nurses, so they're well-versed in this. I oriented one on Monday, a brand-new nurse substitute, and one of the first things I did was train her in Narcan administration. So we've got four of the six done, and I'll just take care of the rest. I'll get them in for a quick training.
Okay, that's wonderful.
One of the things that's in the policy, though, is, you know, there's actually instructions on how it's used. I don't know if you ran across that, but, pardon me, everybody in this room could administer Narcan, and they should be able to.
Yeah.
This is something we do need to look into much more going forward. I think that's the big hole in this policy, is that it's, right now, it's just nurses.
Yes.
But it should be everybody in the entire world, really. It's simple, the instructions are very simple. Outside of the school system, anybody can give Narcan and should give Narcan.
Thank you for that explanation. And then I would just like to say a special thanks for the presentation. I think it's excellent. I think, you know, safety for everyone that works within our buildings, whether they be students or staff, I think this is really, really important. And I also want to just thank the Tewksbury Police Department. I know they were very instrumental in working with us, in, you know, using the different resources that they offered. So, thank you again. I think this is a wonderful thing for our schools.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Ma'am Chair, do we need to adopt this policy?
You need to, you need to take a vote to authorize the school nurse and the school physician to bring Narcan into the schools.
Make that motion.
We will put that policy on our policy agenda, and we'll bring that back to the committee.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
So I have a motion, I have a second on the floor, to adopt the policy as presented this evening.
No, not, excuse me, not adopt the policy, but to allow the school nurses, under Dr. Miller's guidance, to bring Narcan into the schools. Then we'll go and we'll look at the policy and adopt that at our next meeting.
Okay.
After we've had a chance to review it as a committee.
So can we make a motion specifically stating that?
I'll make that motion, to allow the nurses to administer Narcan with their staff under Dr. Miller's supervision. Second.
Okay, so I have a motion, I have a second on the floor, to allow Narcan into our school buildings, administered by nurses only at this point, and at the care of Dr. Donald Miller. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well, so that...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Appreciate it.
And Dr. O'Connor, can we put that policy right on the next policy?
We have a, we have a meeting scheduled, like, I think it's the nineteenth of December. It's that Friday, whatever that Friday happens to be, a week from, a week from this Friday.
So we'll make sure that gets on, perfect. Okay, this time is citizens' forum, so I'd like to see, is there anyone wishing to speak this evening in citizens' forum? Okay, come right up to the...
If you wanna put the laptop covered down, that way, the little triangle on your left is actually the microphone. So on your, excuse me, on your right, right there.
If you could just please state your name and address for the record, that would be terrific.
Yep, my name is Beth Cowett, and I live at 3204 Archstone Avenue in Tewksbury. I wanted to speak tonight about the mascot issue. You have to excuse me, because I'm not a public speaker, but in the English language, we have numerous words that at one point in time were acceptable to say, but no longer are. I believe the mascot name Red Men falls into this category. Dictionary.com defines Red Men as a "contemptuous term to describe Native Americans." Many organizations, including the Massachusetts Center for Native American Awareness, the National Congress of American Indians, and the American Psychological Association, are strongly opposed to Native American mascots, and use words like "offensive," "derogatory," "degrading," "belittling," "dehumanizing," "mocking," and "objectifying" to describe their use. Although I've been a Tewksbury resident for only three years, I understand the history and attachment that many in our town feel to the name Red Men. Some say the name shows respect for Native Americans. Knowing that many Native American groups and people feel offended by the name Red Men makes it impossible for me to be proud to use the name. I don't understand how a racial slur referencing skin color can show respect for anyone. I believe public school systems must strive to promote equality among all people. I do not believe we can continue to say we are teaching our children equality when we use a term that so many people find hurtful and derogatory. In everyday life, my husband and I strive to teach our kindergartner acceptance, respect, and open-mindedness. Using Red Men as a mascot is not consistent with these values. I want all of Tewksbury's children to feel proud to root for their team, and parents to feel comfortable purchasing team clothing. Recently, the Adidas company has offered to finance mascot name changes for school districts. It's time to use this unique opportunity to make this important change. Let's remove Red Men from our everyday speech and pick a mascot name we can all feel proud of. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming this evening. We will take that under advisement. Thank you very much.
Hi. Welcome. My name is Linda Thomas, and I live at 290 Pleasant Street. I also came to talk about how Tewksbury has a unique opportunity here. On November 5th, Adidas announced that it will lead a nationwide voluntary initiative for high schools who want to change mascot names and identities. Adidas will offer its design resources to any high school in America that wants to change their logo or mascot from potentially harmful Native American imagery or symbolism. Additionally, the company will provide financial assistance to schools who want to change their identity to ensure the transition is not cost prohibitive. In 1968, the National Congress of American Indians began its campaign to stop stereotypes in sports and other media. In 2001, the U.S. Commission on Civil Rights called for the end of Native American images and team names. And I'd like to read part of that statement now. The U.S. Commission on Civil Rights, this came out in 2001, calls for an end to the use of Native American images and team names by non-Native schools. The Commission deeply regrets, respects the rights of all Americans to freedom of expression under the First Amendment, and in no way would attempt to prescribe how people can express themselves. However, the Commission believes that the use of Native American images and nicknames in school is insensitive and should be avoided. These references, whether mascots and their performances, logos, or names, are disrespectful and offensive to American Indians and others who are offended by such stereotyping. Since the 1970s, the American Indian leaders and organizations have vigorously voiced their opposition to these mascots and team names because they mock and trivialize Native American religion and culture. The use of stereotyping images of Native Americans by educational institutions has the potential to create a racially hostile educational environment that may be intimidating to Indian students. The stereotyping of any racial, ethnic, religious, or other groups when promoted by our public educational institutions teach all students that stereotyping of minority groups is acceptable, a dangerous lesson in a diverse society. Schools have a responsibility to educate their students. They should not use their influence to perpetuate misrepresentations of any culture or people. The Commission assumes that when Indian imagery was first adopted for sports mascots, it was not to offend Native Americans. However, the use of the imagery and traditions, no matter how popular, should end when they are offensive. And I just want to reiterate that this is a unique opportunity where Tewksbury could receive funding to change its mascot. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming this evening.
Thank you.
Cheryl Garrity, I'm here to speak on issue N for the public records request and Q, I believe it's Q, which is the superintendent search. As it states in the packet, the school committee recently received a letter from the public records division because your attorney produced a very small packet claiming that those were the personal emails of the school committee. And if you read the letter from Sean Williams, it says that it was only due to the intervention of several members of his staff that you finally did that. Nobody in Sean Williams' office, when I spoke to them prior to producing the records, could believe that you would take such a ridiculous position in claiming that those records, because they were personal emails, were not private records. I would like to point out that you did not produce all of your personal records. In fact, the records you produced were nothing new, other than your phone, redacted phone bills. And there are personal records between you and each other member of the school committee, I'm sure. But I also know that there are texts and personal email messages that you've sent from your personal emails to people in the public that were not included. Not only was that a bald-faced lie, but the fact that you told the Secretary of State that you waived all fees is also a known lie. Dr. O'Connor required me to pay him a check prior to obtaining the records. Because I was not prepared to come here tonight and speak to this, I did not have time during the day to go back and look at my records, but I believe it was $250. It might have been $200. And basically, I think the delays and the challenges and the legal fees incurred were a total waste of taxpayers' money. You should have just produced those records from the beginning. But it's also reflective of the fact that this committee refuses to be open and honest and transparent, leading to public distrust. This is further apparent in your appointment of the Superintendent Search Committee. Now, I did apply for that, and I received a handwritten letter from the chair that I had not been appointed. And I'm actually glad I was not appointed, because this process is going to be challenged. And even if you're not told to redo the process, the people of Tewksbury will neither respect the hard work of that committee, nor trust its recommendations, further leading to a distrust of this committee. I'm also surprised that this committee abdicated its responsibility to hire and fire the superintendent. That's the only real responsibility and power that this committee has after education reform in the 1990s. And the majority of you allowed one person to privately do that. It's neither transparent nor honest to be doing things outside of the public eye. This is a democracy, and if you want to have a democracy and to have public trust, and for people to have faith in any of the work that you do, I would encourage you to rethink your procedures and to be more honest and open with the public. I'd be happy to answer any questions, if the committee has any.
Does there be any questions this evening?
Thank you.
Thank you for coming this evening.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to turn it over to our clerk, Mr. Cutlass, to present our minutes this evening.
Thank you, ma'am chair. I'll move the minutes of the November 18, 2015 Regular School Committee meeting.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second on the floor, to read, approve the minutes for the November 18, 2015 Regular Scheduled Meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any? Chair votes aye as well.
And I'll move the minutes of the November 18, 2015 Executive Session meeting.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second on the floor, to approve the November 18, 2015 Executive Session minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. Thank you, Mr. Cutlass. I would now ask our clerk, Mr. Cutlass, to present our payroll.
Thank you, ma'am chair. I'll move the payroll for the period ending November 19, 2015, the amount of $1,299,907.53.
Second.
So I have a motion, I have a second on the floor, to approve the payroll, period ending November 19, 2015. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well.
And I'll move the payroll for the period ending December 3, 2015, the amount of
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second, to approve the payroll, period ending December 3, 2015. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. Thank you, Mr. Cutlass.
All right, thank you, ma'am chair.
Moving on to the consent agenda, does anyone wish to take anything off the consent agenda this evening? Okay, not seeing anything. Could I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to accept tonight's consent agenda.
Second.
So I have a motion, I have a second on the floor, to accept tonight's consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. Okay, Dr. O'Connor, we have the superintendent and staff reports this evening.
Great, thank you. Pleased to announce that we sent three food service representatives to the Massachusetts Center for... School Breakfast Challenge Summit. This was on December 2, and it was designed to increase school participation in our breakfast program. As you know, over the last couple of years, we have faced in breakfast programs in all of our schools, and we're looking to build participation in that particular offering during the day. In your consent agenda, there is a list of upcoming school events over the next couple of weeks. The list is lengthy, you might want to take a look at it. If you are free and willing to attend an event, feel free to give me a call, we'll schedule it, and I'll try to attend with you. I'm also pleased to announce that we received donations from Cummings Property. This is a large commercial property company in eastern Massachusetts. The employee-directed giving program has donated $1,000 to our English Language Warner Program. We're very excited. Karen Hodgson, Kathy Henry, Mary Kara Metropolis, Joanne Garvey. Very excited to realize that we've had a generous donation by this company, which will go towards purchasing materials that will be used with our 30 or so English Language Wonders. If you recall at the last meeting, we had Eric Clifford approach us regarding bus issues on DeKalbous Drive. I can tell you that Mr. Libby met with Mr. Clifford and talked to Ed Wayne about the issues surrounding a bus traveling down a private road into a private complex to pick up students in consultation with Tewksbury Transit. The decision was not to have the bus pull down into the private road and into the private property that the students will have to meet at the corner of Main Street into DeKalbous Drive. So I wanted to follow that up and just make sure that you're aware of that. Tonight in policy, ECE-R, Tewksbury Memorial High School Parking Privileges, was brought to our attention today, and I would ask you to strike out the word senior in the first line of the policy and substitute it with the word student.
Okay.
And then I would ask you to go ahead and take action on that policy. Also, very excited, the Robert Kraft and H.G. Healy and the New England Patriots Charitable Foundation launched its first-of-a-kind youth violence prevention program. Program is called Game Change, the Patriots Anti-Violence Partnership, and Tewksbury Memorial High School has been accepted to participate in this grant. $1.5 million has been donated by the Charitable Foundation from the Patriots, and we will be sending two teachers, actually Guidance Councilor Tina Sheehan and English teacher Andy Ballistri for training with the organization, so we're very excited about that. Tomorrow, I'll be attending the Valley Collaborative Board of Directors meeting in the Wind Middle, I'm sorry, in U.S. News and World Report recently. There was an article about a walk-in planetarium and kids being exposed to STEM, and it focused on our own Wind Middle School. So we made national, national press for our Wind Middle School students, so we're very excited about that. That's all I have for this evening. Mrs. Regan.
I'm going to wait and reserve my time and do a few things in old business.
Okay.
And I'm going to do the same thing, my stuff is in old business, can you get it?
Thank you. Okay, if we move right along to committee reports, do we have anything this evening for the high school building?
No, nothing to report.
Okay, thank you. We do have an update from the Tewksbury Education Foundation. The Barnes &amp; Noble fundraiser last said it was a big success. It was great to see so many students, parents, and school staff attend. There were special readings by Dr. O'Connor, Mrs. Regan, principals, students, and local authors, along with the Tewksbury Memorial High School chorus and band. Thanks to all those who tended and volunteered. The online shopping for Barnes &amp; Noble ends tonight, so you can still go online. You have still time to go shopping tonight if you're watching from home. Also, the Tewksbury Education Foundation has kicked off a staff recognition program. The Tewksbury Education Foundation invites you to honor a special Tewksbury Public School educator or staff member through this program. Through this program, you may recognize someone by making a tax-deductible donation to the Tewksbury Education Foundation in his or her name. They will send each honoree a personalized certificate which acknowledges your gift to the Tewksbury Education Foundation in their name. This certificate will state your name and personal message if you choose, but it will not disclose the amount of your gift. The honoree will also receive a Tewksbury Education lapel in distinguishing them as a proud Tewksbury Education Foundation recognition recipient. Those who are recognized will also be included on Tewksbury Education Foundation's website as a list of honorees. This would make a great holiday gift for those people out there, if anyone's watching, and pass the word to all your friends. And then the Tewksbury Education Foundation is planning to hold a meeting in January to discuss all the earnings from the auction, as well as the Barnes &amp; Noble, and determine what STEAM items will be purchased for the school district with the Superintendent's Office. All are welcome to attend, and once the meeting date is finalized, it will be posted on the Tewksbury Education Foundation website. So thank you to the Tewksbury Education Foundation for that update this evening. And then just a quick update on the Tewksbury Special Education PAC Executive Committee. We did hold a meeting on November 20, 2015, at 9:00 a.m. in the Superintendent's Office. I will tell you that it was a productive meeting, it was well-attended. We had all the case managers from all our schools, as well as Director of Student Services, our Superintendent, our School Committee members, and then also the Chair for the Special PAC, Mrs. Bianca Cole. So I thought it was a great meeting, a very informative meeting, and we look forward to that next meeting. And then the Wellness Advisory Committee, I'll send down to Mrs. Miller this evening.
Thank you. There's nothing new to report. We'll be having a newsletter coming out shortly from the Director of Food Services, Debma.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Oh, actually, you know what? I do have a question to, for, through the Chair, to the administrators regarding bringing in safe routes to school. Matt Castangue, the principal at the Trinity School, brought in safe routes to school last year, and bringing them in to do trainings over the winter and in the spring, as appropriate, opens us up to federal funding for significant resources. When I say significant, I mean significant. There are some intersections that really need to be redesigned, near the Heathbrook School in particular, for, you can't even cross the street over there, as you know. So if you can bring that back to your administrative team and have Matt report out on that, that's something the Wellness Committee is looking at. Thank you so much.
We'll have a meeting next week.
Okay, thank you very much.
We'll push back to you.
Yep, as appropriate, yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Miller. Thank you. Okay, now we're going to move right along to our policies, and we'll turn this over to Mr. Dick for our policies.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tonight, we have following policies, recommending for revision for the Tewksbury Public Schools into or adopt the MSC policy. This is the second and final reading, so we're going to make a motion at the end of this to approve as amended. So we get policy EB-B-E-Axent, illness notification form, ECE-R-Tewksbury Memorial High School Parking Privileges. That was the policy that Dr. O'Connor talked about, making the change, taking out the first line, senior, putting in student. Policy EE-AEC, student conduct on school buses, EE-AEF, use of video camera on school buses, and the last one is EFP, payment for schools, for food services. So those policies, I'd like to make a motion to approve as amended, the Tewksbury Public Schools policies.
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion, I have a second on the floor to adopt the policies as presented this evening, as Mr. Dick just recited, with the one exception of the policy on the Tewksbury Memorial High School parking privilege. We're going to cross out the word seniors, as we all know, it applies to not only just senior students, but it could be seniors, juniors, and sophomores, so we're going to leave it at just students. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well.
The next set of policies, I'm going to recommend to rescind. Basically, it's because it changes federal state law, when the policy obsolete and valid or we should replace policy, no longer relevant. So this is the second and final reading for these following policies. EBCA, crisis team procedures, EBCC, responding to bomb threat, EBCC-E, Tewksbury Fire and Police Notification Card, EBCC-R, administrative procedures, bomb threats and other incidents, EE-AEC-R, student conduct on school buses, and policy FPD, facilities planning. So I'd like to make a motion to rescind these policies.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second on the floor to rescind the following policies as Mr. Dick just recited. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. Thank you, Mr. Dick.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move right over to Old Business Number One, Grant Update.
I just wanted to, this is my estimation, the last time we met, I gave you the FY15 final, so I just wanted to show you where some of our funding is coming from, with federal and state grants, and currently, our anticipated grant funds are approximately $15,000 higher than they were in FY15. So it's just information for you.
Does anyone have any questions or concerns in reviewing the grant breakdown? Okay, thank you, Mrs. Matthews. Moving right along to the next one, Financial Update.
I just wanted the committee to know that what I did is I did not have ever advised, December 9, revised financial update, which again, this meeting tomorrow, I'll have Mr. Johnson up for that, so it's available to everybody. We had some, we had some purchase orders that were in wrong accounts, so we had to fix all of that, so I wanted to make sure that this report reflected exactly where the money was supposed to be taken from. So that's what we have to do. And you'll notice on the cover page, there is a column that says transfer slash adjustments. Those adjustments, that $121,139, that's the money that was voted in at the October meeting, that the town accountant has taken and put into the right accounts. What you'll notice, next time we get another budget update, I did have a budget transfer sheet, there are some accounts that are negatives, so I've done a budget transfer, I will be doing a budget transfer, it'll be offset and approved, and you will notice that those columns, next time, will reflect all of the sheets just up here. Does anyone have any questions on that? Oh, and just to give you a separate update, now that everything and all the purchase orders are in the right place, I mean, Dr. O'Connor and I had talked, we're going to probably have a better updated on special education.
Okay. I thought we were going to have that tonight, that's not tonight.
Okay, okay. Okay, does anyone have any questions or concerns for Mathis Matthews?
So that update, sorry, Madam Chair, question?
Great, Mr. Dick.
So the special ed expenses, or the update on finances, what will that include? Just where we are?
Where we are, as opposed to the money that got voted in, the $725,000, the extra fund that the town is in charge of.
Set aside for us.
The set aside money. I'm doing a complete, I had to wait until this was all set, so I can do a complete overhaul and see exactly where we stand, and if we're going to, my goal is to hopefully not tap into it.
Right.
But I can give you a better update as to exactly where we stand.
Next meeting. That's great, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Dick. Is there anyone else?
I guess my only question to you, I mean, I went through this report, is there any potential concerns that you have moving forward to finish off this year's budget?
The only concerns are our buildings and kind of where we stand with our buildings and contracted services for our buildings. We're very close to our limits.
Correct.
Under maintenance, contracted services.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it's only December. We're hoping that we don't, fingers crossed, we don't have the kind of snow that we had last year.
Okay. Because that's what I was going to say, when we look through some of these numbers, some of the balances are pretty low, and it is only December, so I guess my only concern would be, is if we see any of these counts getting even lower, if you can alert the committee as soon as possible, rather than, you know, sooner than later, because I am concerned about a couple of the account balances, but that would be my only comment.
But please also, we do encumber, we do have blank purchase orders, you know, the heat, all the gas, all the utilities, we have.
That's all covered.
It's all encumbered. Unless it goes exceptionally, it shouldn't go over, because I thought it was based on actuals from last year.
Okay.
And what we've done in a number of years is we've sort of put the brakes on spending, January, February, to give us an opportunity to look at where we are financially, and then as the picture develops much more clearly, then we start releasing funds for additional purchases from the schools.
We have to make sure all the fixed costs are covered.
Right.
Covered.
Yeah. And we'll let you know if we're, if we're putting the brakes on at some point in time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving right along, our next topic is parking.
I thank you. This is a topic that has generated a lot of interest at the high school. I provided you with some data here that will help you understand the issue at the high school. There are 400 parking spaces here at Tewksbury Memorial High School. If you break that down, it sort of flows like this. There are 11 handicap spaces, 15 visitor spaces, 135 staff spaces, and 17 spaces that we lose upwards of three to four months, snow conditions. They're generally the end spaces on the various islands that run down, and we generally lose up to about 17. Last year was even a little higher. We had kids that were almost out there shoveling out their space, trying to, trying to pull in. It was pretty challenging. And then, we ran into an issue this year where we had approximately 12 to 15 people on average parking in the rear of the school. The fire department has committed and has labeled all of the perimeter road in the back of the school as a fire lane, therefore, we could not park there. That has reduced our number of spaces from last year, 234, to this year, 222 spaces for students. As you can see by the small chart that you have in front of you, we've already allocated 157 spaces to seniors, 65 spaces to juniors, and every day, we have another junior, or two, walking in saying, hey, I have my license, I'd like to buy a parking space. Unfortunately, we do not have any. So we've identified a couple of things that we could do that might free up some spaces. One, there are some administrator spots that have been allocated, Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent, and others. Let's eliminate those. We can come here and park in visitors. That'd free up some spots. There's not much we can do about...